Evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 21st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency and now join me as we salute the Stars and Stripes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in every way, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is continued public hearing for the enclave at Hyde Park. The applicants are seeking approval to convert a 74 lot subdivision into a smaller subdivision of 25 two-family homes. Make it a motion to reopen.
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was laughing, but Shannon Chris seemed to have this down now, Pat. The applicants are not here this evening because they're still working on a variety of, a plethora of issues, many of them legal. Speaking of, Mr. Alexander's here representing, I suppose, that applicant as well, but I don't believe there's anything new to add into the record for the enclave.
We look forward to seeing you soon. We look forward to seeing you soon and working on lots of documents for Ms. Bolodar.
There's a lot of legal mattering. And for anyone who might be watching, a lot of what's involved is because this is already a subdivision, and it was subdivided, I should say, there were HOA parcels, there are waterworks parcels, there's sewer works parcels. Because the lot lines are changing, this all has to be rerecorded with meets and bounds, et cetera. So it's just a detailed amount of work, not necessarily difficult. Any comments from the consultants? Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application this evening? There being none, make it a motion to adjourn this to July 19th.
July 19th.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Chan did.
Chan in a second.
Me.
Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
We were trying to shake it up a little.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is another public hearing, also continued for Hyde Park Town Center North. Also, we're looking at this in terms of Mavis tire repair. I'm not going to go through the many iterations that the plan has undergone. Instead, I'm going to turn it over to the applicants because it looks like we have a show and tell tonight. Make it a motion over the public hearing.
So move.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a reminder, yes, Mr. Pickett is recused from this, and I don't see our alternate, Mr. Waters. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to go over the plans or just start with the materials? I think everyone has had a chance to review the plans. We took a significant amount of time. Thank you for allowing us to meet with your consultants directly. So everyone knows we've been meeting back and forth and just making sure that everything, i's dotted, t's crossed, I think we're there.
Anyone have any questions about the last iteration of plans?
They looked good.
Yeah, we're all, we've pretty much signed off on them, so let's go right into the news.
And we gave you the elevation with the different cupola, so I don't know if everyone saw that full size.
I think we did, and I think it looks fantastic. And like Ann, whenever I go by now, any place, Southlands yesterday, I saw, look, four cupolas, everything is cupolas now to me, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna just hand over, are you gonna keep these materials? Is that what you want to do?
I don't think they're gonna keep them. I think the board's gonna look at them.
Okay.
Yes.
And then do you want me to just give you a sheet at the end with all of the material spec and colors?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll hand that in when we're done.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, tack does like colored chips, we just don't have room to store like, you know, pieces of gutter.
I understand.
So you have to get pink chips.
I would've brought more, yeah, but I thought that this was...
You can, you can hand them in then.
Okay, so this is gonna be the hardy maller, that's the hardy blank. And then the trim is white, so obviously we would never have... These are the cultured stone for everything around the columns and the base, it's on there. Shingles.
I thought you brought pizza there for a moment, honestly. Direct from Cosmos.
Very nice. Kelly?
Which shingle is it?
The brim for the leaders?
Okay, hold on, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which shingle is it? Did he write on the back which shingle it was?
Weathered wood.
Weathered wood, okay.
Is it, oh, is it this one here?
It's all of them.
Oh, it's a whole thing?
That's the red, yeah. So it moves.
Gotcha. But it's this whole one.
Yeah, there it is, you get the different color.
Thank you.
Now we get it, thank you.
It's a crunchy pizza. It's like a pizza.
So the hardy board is deep ocean and the shingles are weathered wood.
And why would this not be the color of the siding?
Uh, they'd like to complement it. Is, are the gutters the brown?
The gutters and that are matching.
With the roof.
And the downed out match.
So they're gonna be brown, but the siding's gonna be gray?
Yeah, it's a complementary color.
It'll pick up the color of the stones.
Okay, and the roof. And the roof.
And which, I'm sorry, which roof color are we going with?
It's, they're all, it's, that is the, that's just a sample, you get mixed.
We had a selection across the top.
Yeah, so it's the weathered wood.
Thank you for providing an exhaustive supply of materials.
In addition, one of the items that the board asked for last time was specifications of all of the glass, what color the glass was going to be, so I did provide you, I didn't print that elevation, but we did give you a sheet that detailed that.
We went over that last week, too, yes.
And as far as the garage doors, so I'll provide you with the specification when I give you an entire list. It looks like they're clumpy architectural doors, and they're gonna be an oil rubbed bronze, it's the manufacturer.
Manufacturer.
Yeah. It's an oil rubbed, oil rubbed bronze color, which will complement what you had just indicated. And then the glass is specified on the plan that I gave you prior. There was a plan, Ann, that looks like this.
Yes.
There were two elevations, and the other one specified all of the glass.
Right, okay.
So he detailed the dormers, everything, so you had that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just having a little problem hearing.
Okay. So what I will do is I will provide you with a sheet that indicates the specification, the manufacturer, and the spec, the color.
Thank you.
So that you have that. Okay, so that's everything.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy actually had a question that I thought was a good one. When we were looking at the gutters, I'm sure somebody's calculated how many gallons per minute you need to come off the roof.
That was a joke, that's a...
Well, it may have been a joke, I think it's a good question.
No, that's all done, yeah, that's all done.
Part of the SWIP, right?
It's built in, it's calculated, but it's built into the sizing. So yes, it ha, it is calculated.
Okay.
But it's per forma, so they know exactly how much. The spacing and amount of gutters and the size of the gutters is based on size of the roof.
Perfect, thank you.
But it's based on how many gallons, so it's, it's a good question.
For some audience members at home watching on TV, they keep emailing me that we're failing now, since we don't have Mr. Sweet as director, that I'm letting people speak without the microphone. I think your voice, I know, I think your voice carries Joe, but just in case.
Okay, one, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, do you want me to go over the signs?
Nope, keep on going.
Okay, one of the change that we also spoke to Mavis about, one of the questions at the last planning board meeting had to do with the unity and the consistency for the monument signs. So as, if everyone recalls, there's two monument signs. One is at the Route 9 entrance, which is that existing entrance, the other is at Pine Woods Road. So Route 9 is 60 square feet, Pine Woods Road is 40 square feet. We had provided you with this elevation, we did, it took some time to speak to Mavis, it's just a big corporation, so we finally were able to get closure on this today, and they have agreed to do a white background with the teal letters. So we'll get a consistent uniform look.
Ah, thank you.
On the monument sign, on the wall signs, everything's been designed per code, the dimensions are on the wall sign, I know they're hard to see, but we're gonna pull those out, and the colors, we'll specify, we did work with them today to get the exact PMS colors, and we'll put those on the plan, so you have those.
Thank you.
And that, that's, I think, all of the changes that we've...
These were some minor items that we noticed at the very end. Ms. Moss was questioning today how the signs are lit, and it's noted on the sheets that we all have, the photographs. This is going to be lit just exactly as the sign at Town Center South would be, like the McDonald's, that's why they submitted that also with the sign package. So it'll be a light bar at the bottom and also at the top, and...
It's also the same design, right?
It's the exact same design, it's the exact same everything.
There's a little light bar on the bottom, that's why we gave you that photo.
So, and in addition, in the resolution that's been prepared, it says that the signs must be code compliant, so as far as we know, everything is fine. Ms. Moss just, I think, was a little hurried in her final review and didn't notice where it specifies how it's lit on the right.
So, one of the members of the public just asked a question about a water spigot. So I was just pointing out that, do you want to respond to that question? Yeah, somehow the request for the need for a water spigot in the park came up, and we're not proposing a water spigot in the park, we never were, I don't, I'm not sure how it came up, but nonetheless, in order to do that, we already have all of our plans in front of Dutchess County Water and Waste Water for this application. We would have to do a separate meter and a backflow preventer, so there's a significant amount of work that we would have to do. We really don't have a desire to put a water spigot in...
That would cause delay inside the town that you need to start. So I believe that what happened was it was a suggestion and a mention, and I believe that when I was in Town Hall and with our administrative assistant, Ms. Whitman, Mr. Voiceover heard it and said, "Well, that'd be a great idea," and somehow that got...
Correct, yes.
...looped into the system, so, but since no spigot was required and it's at this late date, I think, and we have added a condition as well, that our landscaping must be maintained and healthy as our code requires, so it would just be, if there was a drought, you'd have to go up and do some hand watering, which is what a lot of people have to do.
I know.
But it's a large site, and I've been seeing in the recent re-landscaping of the adjacent site, you're watering as well to make sure everything stays healthy and alive, with long extended hoses, so you just may have to do that here for the time being. So, any other comments from the consultants?
I do want to point out that because of all the last-minute sign changes, we've added a condition that the applicants submit a new sign package showing all the dimensional requirements and the new tenant...
Tenant panel.
That's fine.
Any comments from the board? Ms. Kane, Mr. Murphy?
No.
Any comments?
No.
Any comments? Yes.
Just a question, when you were mentioning the, maintaining the landscape, I know it's not part of the original plan, is, how difficult, and I'm not saying it should be required, but just asking the question, to just put in an irrigation system? I mean, I was thinking it would just free people up.
It's really complicated, and because...
With that area?
Yeah, because we're doing a whole new water system with a master meter pit, and it's completely, you know, in the old days, when you could just put a water line in, but now we need a separate meter, a backflow preventer, and we're really, I mean, we literally got a confirmation from Dutchess County Water and Waste Water that they're ready to issue the permit, and we, we want to proceed.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, at some future time, if we decide that we want to do it, we could, but Mavis plays for their own separate utilities. Yep, so everything has to get, you know, people, the water has to get paid for.
Well, I guess I was always concerned about people just carrying the water to the plants to keep everything hydrated, was trying to be more efficient in the thought.
The board has suggested soaker hoses, so to speak, an actual irrigation system, it looks like a soaker hose, and it was actually, it was installed at the Dunkin' Donuts on 9G, as well as at where Shelley's Deli is. Those are all installed there because it's easier, the ground slopes down from where the road is, so they wanted to put water in there to make sure everything stayed alive. In this instance, it's pretty flat, and let's also remember that there's a septic area underneath this.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And I don't, that's one of the issues about installing an irrigation system where there's septic, it doesn't seem like a very good idea to me. So I think that, knowing that the applicants themselves are very interested in landscaping, I think this is gonna be a beautiful addition to the community.
And I did, I did actually have another question. The cross-access easement agreements, how are those proceeding, or, because I noticed that that would look to be like one of the larger conditions on the resolution.
Yeah, it's, it's not that heavy a lift, we're working on it. I think there are two separate issues in there. One is more the, so you want to make sure that the two sites function together. So the way I'm conceptually working on it, and going to have to have more conversations probably with Victoria about it, is the area behind the Mavis going to behind the barn area, essentially, that needs to sort of say, stay fixed, right? But how someone traverses the site from Pine Woods all the way down to Crumwold, essentially, if you think about it, as a big shopping center, that needs to be completely flexible for the future, for everyone's usage. So it's sort of going, probably gonna be a sol, you know, an access easement area, and that's specific, and then have a general routing that also, one, each owner has to allow the others, tenants, pedestrians, and trucks to get from one place to the other. Because you don't want to hold the routing, because we don't know what we want to do, and, and given the issue that we ran into...
Oh, it's a lot of flexibility for the future as well, got you.
And then, so the second issue is also, which is more an ownership issue than, than a town issue, is also to acknowledge that there are development rights on both parcels, and therefore you don't want to have one parcel in the future claiming burdening of an easement 25 years from now. So for example, if you ever built that townhouse project, right, and then you cut it off as a separate lot, in order for financing reasons, you don't want those people to say, "Well, well, all of a sudden now I got this new X, Y, or Z, and now they're burdening, and they," so you want everybody to be on notice in the future. We've drafted something, Victoria and I had another call, this is now subsequent to the call, what I think I, we tried to memorialize, which adds like two paragraphs. So it's, we're trying to keep it simple, like two pages, but I wanted to sort of explain the essence and the idea of why we need, rather than giving a relocation right or giving a meets and bounds, talk to the performance zoning aspect of the easement, so to speak, that it has to accomplish a purpose, but let's not carve it in sand in order to let the marketplace figure out how that works.
I think you could carve it in sand and just change it, it's covered in stone you're talking about, that would be hard to change.
Good point.
You want to carve it in sand. So, but that's, aren't there other easements that you have to do with the owners of the properties in the front, where the parking is, was that anything? No.
No, the reciprocal access easement was for the... The reciprocal access easement had to do with the use, remember, we modified the truck path.
The parking lot, right?
Yeah, well, the trucks now are gonna be able to come in. So we need to have reciprocal access easements that allow the trucks to come into the property to the south.
Yep.
And through that interchange, and then, and vice versa.
Okay, but you don't need them with the front, because...
Correct.
You actually just brought up a great point.
A lot of times, they don't need that access, they don't need to cross her property in order to...
Right.
Oh, okay.
And actually, but I think Ann just brought up a great point I hadn't thought about yet. We should file the consolidation deed before we file, immediately prior to filing the easement, so it applies to both properties.
Yes.
Because there, to remind the audience, there are actually two parcels, one is where the septic and the rain, the garden will be going, the garden park, those are going to be combined, so that way the easements will apply to the new one big lot. So, thank you, and good question. And I like the creativity I'm hearing from here.
Yeah.
In terms of trying to allow for future development, because this is a tabula rasa, we don't know what you're going to do with the rest of it, and there are lots of possibilities, so you don't want to limit it.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who has this resolution?
I do. So, resolution granting site plan approval to the Hyde Park Town Center North, Mavis, June 21st, 2017, resolution number 16-15C. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves the site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, approval by the planning board attorney of the reciprocal cross-access easement with the lands of Cosmo Town Center LLC, authorizing access for pedestrian vehicle and truck traffic. Three, evidence that tax lots identified as 6065-04-919007 and 6065-04-933017 have been legally consolidated. Revision of the site plan to, oh, excuse me, four, revision of the site plan to include a detail of the curb and sidewalk along Pine Woods Road, the sidewalk shall be five feet wide. Five, revision of the site plan to remove the wording "future development" regarding the sidewalk along Pine Woods Road as it must be installed as part of the project. Six, revision of the sign elevations to indicate compliance with all dimensional regulations, including labeling widths of columns and any supporting structures and design unity, including all tenant panels on a white background. Seven, revision of the site plan to remove the existing central Hudson lights without the option to disconnect. Eight, submission of a revised SWIP for lands of Cosmo Town Center LLC, which includes improvements proposed as part of this project. Nine, submission of an erosion and sediment control permit. Ten, revision of the site plan to make all parking spaces 9x18 in areas to be restriped. Eleven, revision of the bulk table to note the variances granted. Twelve, revision of the site plan to include a note that the western-facing bay doors are decorative only and shall not be operable or opened. Thirteen, addition of a landscaping maintenance note to the landscaping plan, planting notes which requires landscaping to be watered and maintained in a healthy condition and replacement of dead or diseased plants and trees. Be it further resolved that before a certificate of occupancy may be issued for the auto repair shop, the zoning administrator shall verify that the following conditions have been satisfied. One, proof of recordation, recordation of the approved reciprocal cross-access easement with the Dutchess County Clerk. Two, submission of a report from Novus Engineering, reviewed and approved by the planning board's noise consultant, which determines the necessity of additional wall absorption material on the interior of the auto repair shop. If the report indicates that such material is necessary, it shall be installed before a certificate of occupancy may be issued. Three, installation of the sidewalk along Pine Woods Road in accordance with the site plan.
Second.
Thank you. A bit of quick discussion on the second condition and the further resolve relating to the certificate of occupancy. In reviewing the minutes, when we discussed with your engineer, he said that there may need to be some more sound absorption material, but he wouldn't know until the interior had been designed. So this condition is just there, that, and he said that he could just look at it from the plans, once you have more detail than what we're seeing there.
We actually, we are putting it in.
Oh.
So we did get confirmation from the architect today, and from, what had happened is, they had, the noise consultant and the architect did have a conference call...
Great.
...a way back when, and what they're doing is, the same material that's being applied to the ceiling is being applied to the walls and strips where there's no racks. So we're just waiting for the racking plan from Mavis, and then we'll identify, and it goes in 48 inches.
And the note does say that, on point two...
Yeah.
Of Aspie, I think it is...
That's what that was, yeah.
Yes, so, because it does say above, and then it, I understand now, so where there's no racking...
Where there's no rack.
...it's gonna be on the sides of the walls.
Correct.
Once they finally determine that. Okay, great, thank you.
And then I just have one more, or actually two more questions. On number 10, I just want to make sure that it's clarified, that the reorientation or the reconfiguration of the parking spaces to 9x18 is in the areas that we're milling and repaving and restriping.
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
When we were looking at it, it appears that some of them had kept, if you recall, some of the old parking was 10x20, and some were 9x18, and when we scaled it, not all the spaces were carried over as to 9x18. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. We're excited to see it get started. I know there's a lot of conditions to meet, but I believe you have a demolition permit, have already applied for one?
We're about to apply with Don, he's been very good at helping us, yeah, so that should be forthcoming shortly. And we'll coordinate with the fire department to make sure that they're aware of what's going on.
Thank you, and thanks again, gentlemen. We're looking, seriously looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
There was an open house here on Monday evening, you may have heard about it, there were probably about 150, 160 residents who came in over the three-hour period, and had a chance, it wasn't part of the display, but a couple people recognized me and said, "Could I see the Mavis?" And I said, "Sure," I brought them back into the planning board office, and there wasn't a single resident who didn't see it and say, "What a great job," and how much they loved it.
Thank you.
So, I think, I think it's something that residents will be proud of, so thank you again.
We're gonna leave the samples here, is that what you want us to do? And then we'll bring the, the sheet in?
And when you bring the sheet in, you take the samples back?
Yeah.
How many days?
I think Ms. Moss is going to take a picture of them.
Yeah.
A screenshot.
As long as they pick them up.
Yeah, because...
Yeah, well, they'll stay until she submits the sheet with all the colors.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Anderson Center for Autism. In brief, the applicants are seeking to add some storage facilities, sheds, also to, at some point in the future, add what we'll call a rain park or an experiential park for the individuals who live there, and sort of some small and sundry items. It does require site plan, and we did refer this to county planning, we received their response, and let me get a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let me turn it over to you guys.
Good evening, Mark Day, Day Engineering, representing the Anderson School for Autism. With me tonight is Marie Aspie from the school. As you mentioned, we're here tonight to basically propose what we're gonna call a master plan, amendment to the master plan. In this amendment, we are proposing some new storage set, storage facilities for some of the equipment that is currently stored in the open down at the north end of the project. We are proposing a pre-engineered structure, which is about, is 84 by 80 foot, which will house a lot of the utilities, and lawnmowers, abaco, they have gators and such that will be stored in there. There are some existing storage containers, which we're actually gonna leave in that location, we're just gonna rearrange them so they're a little bit more, let's say, usable. One of the items that we had actually forgot to include in this prior discussion with the board is, there was a golf cart storage facility which was located immediately adjacent to the Village Center. That's there now, we actually are proposing to relocate that in that same equipment storage area on the north end of the facility, so that'll be out of sight. There was a smaller golf cart facility that was next to the Village Center, that was since relocated to the, behind, to the north end of the Education Center, that's there now. I have photos, I will show you that. Also, as part of this application, we're proposing a 36 by 75 foot elliptical water feature, which would be in front of these three residences here. We are also proposing to do a 30 by 30 pavilion in between the wings of the Education Center on the north end. We are also, I don't know if everybody remembers, I think I mentioned it last time we were here, this used to be a propane farm, propane tank farm. That was decommissioned last year. The site's been converted to natural gas, that was done also last year. We are proposing a garden deck on the north side of the salt shed, and we're also proposing these recreation buildings for storage of the recreation equipment on the east side of the existing recreation building. Think I got them all. This is the pavilion, this is basically, this is a, obviously, it's, it's a proprietary This is the pavilion, this is basically, this is a, obviously, it's, it's a proprietary photograph of what we're proposing. The colors, I believe, are the same as what we're going to be getting. This is at the north end of the education center. We're also proposing, as I mentioned, this equipment shed which would be on the north end of the site, which would store all the utility equipment and things like that. These are the recreation buildings that would be stored, used for storage at the recreation area. This is actually a, the proposed elliptical water feature which would be over in front of the residences. These two are photographs of the current golf cart storage facilities that were, that are onsite. Their purpose is, as you may know, they have considerable number of golf carts for staff. These are actually there to protect them in obviously adverse weather. Also, this is the, the garden shed that would be, excuse me, deck, that would be installed on the north end of the salt shed. Little bit of history, it's, it's 104 acres, it's in the waterfront district. Facility's been there for a number of years.
1924.
1920?
1924.
Thank you, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
Before I go to the consultants, there was a site visit last evening. I was unable to make it at a board of trustees meeting, but does anyone from the, who attended want to give a brief statement about it?
I'll speak to it.
Please do.
We had the pleasure of meeting with Maria and touring the site, and it was very helpful and she was very informative, telling us the history of the school, but getting to see the topography and, and how the proposed buildings would, would be laid out was, was very helpful, and I think that the building, I'm sorry, the one that's past the pond where you're going to store all the equipment, is that the north end of the site?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's barely visible from, from the rest of, from the rest of the site, and the other buildings, I think, will be improvements. They've got a lot going on in their rec center, and their rec center right now is used to store a lot of equipment, and so having these two additional sheds will really help them, and there's an appropriate place along the field. The only question I had was about the deck that's next to the garden-
Mm-hmm.
...because the land behind the salt shed kind of has a, has a swale. I mean, it's obviously designed to be a water catchment area. So, is the deck going to be essentially a bridge across that?
Correct.
Okay.
It'll be raised, it'll be raised above it. As you, as you've probably seen in a lot of decks, they're on, let's say, posts, if you will.
Right.
The swale will continue to run underneath that deck.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so, and they have this beautiful garden area with a cooped house-
Mm-hmm.
...and the students are working with somebody from, I'm sorry-
Cornell.
From Cornell Cooperative and growing a lot of their own vegetables and herbs, and they need a protected area for the kids so they're not out in the sun when they're working. I think it's a fantastic program.
The Anderson Center does amazing things, let's be honest. It's one of the crown jewels in Hyde Park's sort of constellation. Any other comments about the sidewalk?
I just want to thank Maria for taking the time out to show us, and having now lived through that first master plan, that site is just, I can't believe the transformation, and I think Tori said it best, it's someplace that you could, you would want to live. It's beautifully done, the walkways are just so well thought out that you want to get from here to there, there's a walkway that very nicely and easily gets you there, and it's just, it's just fantastic the way that you've, you stuck with your master plan and executed it, and this will only, it just like fills in some of the, the spots that, that needed, that weren't taken care of through the first round, so, but thank you so much for taking time out to show us.
Absolutely welcome.
Any comments from the consultants? Mr. Lern?
I think pretty much everything has been addressed, brought up already. We just had a couple of minor comments. There seems to be some question as to whether or not some of the recreation buildings might be in, in the area of existing stormwater practices.
We did look at that, and we think that-
Could you please use the microphone?
Yes. Sorry. We did look at that. These, the two proposed accessory buildings are actually to the west. This area right in here is that swale that I believe was part of the stormwater maintenance plant or management, and we did move those, they were always shown in the west. There's a slight ridge here right off the end of the parking lot, we felt that was the best spot, and it certainly was without, outside of that drainage area.
Okay, good. And then the only other thing we really saw was the lighting, just that we need to provide some shielding to prevent any glare. The lights seem a little bright at the buildings, but I think that, you know, given the location, it's probably-
And these have incorporated as conditions in an approval resolution.
Right.
Thank you. Ms. Pollard, are there any comments?
No comments.
Let me start from my right. Mr. Nappel, any comments?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
Nothing additional.
And Mr. Pickett?
I was part of the tour yesterday, thank you very much. It was very informative, and you can definitely, you can see that there's a definite need for what you're proposing there for supporting the facility, facility maintenance, equipment maintenance, and things like that, so, look forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy?
No comment.
Ms. C, anything additional?
No further comments.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none, make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution granting site amendment approval to Anderson School, Anderson Center of Autism, the storage sheds, water feature, and pavilion, today's day of June 21st, 2017, resolution number 2017-17A. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby adopts a determination of non-significance for the reasons set forth in the attached notice of determination of significance. Finding that the project will not result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared and be a further result of the planning board hereby granting site plan amendment approval to the project as shown on the site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the sheet TS 101 as follows. A, add a sheet index, name of sheet, name, revision date. B, verify that, verify that parcel is connected to DCWWA system. Three, revision of the sheet SP 101 as follows. A, add a key and legend. B, rename recreation sheds to recreation accessory buildings. C, rename equipment shed to equipment building. Revision of sheet SP 102 as follows. A, add a key and legend, rename the sheet master plan update. B, correct the labeling of the golf cart shelter and the tanks for the generator U10 is OFF1. C, regarding the area around the salt storage area, add a note to ensure the existing asphalt berm is not disturbed or provide details for containing salt runoff. D, U5 equipment storage shed shall be asterisked as proposed, as a proposed structure. E, revise U11 to indicate a propane tank. F, identify the golf cart structured to the east of U11 as a proposed new structure. Number five, revision of sheet LP 101 as follows. A, the wall pack light details shall be revised to include a front shield that directs light downward. B, indicate amount, indicate mounting heights of the lights. C, describe where the lights are on timers or photo cells. Number six, approval by the town engineer of light levels on LP 101. Seven, approval by the town engineer of grading and stormwater plans in the area of the new recreation buildings. Number eight, submission of an application for an erosion and sediment control permit. This conditional approval shall expire 180 days from the date of this resolution unless otherwise extended by the planning board or the chair signs the site plan. An approved site plan shall be void, and the building permits, if any, shall be revoked if the entire project is not completed within two years of the signing of the site plan by the planning board chair unless such approval is extended or amended as provided in section 108-9.6. It is the applicant's responsibility to track the time in which this approval expires.
Second.
I have some discussion I don't know. It sounds like there was two golf carts added since the last time you guys came before the planning board?
There was actually one on site that I think was picked up during a site visit that we missed because there were some changes from the original master plan that were added without benefit of the board's knowledge. We missed this one.
Right, so I think, I think both of them need to be identified on the plans.
We did, we put them, and just-
Okay.
-just to mention, we've actually received comments from Morris's office, which we have made those changes. These plans do reflect that. They also, as I mentioned earlier-
We haven't had a chance to review-
No, I understand. But I want to say we, we have shown the one that was relocated, and we are proposing that the one that is currently at the Village Center be relocated to the north end of the property.
Good, and it means that the conditions may have already been met.
Right.
So, once we start reviewing them, that means we can just tick them off.
As long as they're labeled, and, you know, you may need to update the bulk table to include them also, so.
Do you want to copy, by the way, the resolution?
Ah, yes, you could.
You can have mine. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Who was the second?
Second was Ms. Dexter. Thank you, as always. Good luck with these next steps. And I know we'll be seeing you again at some point in the future.
Exactly, okay.
We can continue.
Thank you.
Since we have some scouts in the audience, I feel compelled to add that if it's your first time to see a meeting, the reason why we don't read all the wheras is, is it's basically a recapitulation of all the meetings that have gone forth and what's been sent out, reviewed, et cetera. It just speeds up the time a little bit. For people who watch these meetings continuously, they're already familiar with what goes in and on there. The last item on the agenda is to, a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from April 5th. Did everyone have a chance to read those?
Yep.
May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
You are tag team. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's when these guys are clean.
Thank you very much, media.
Adjournment. Chris and I can't compete with adjournment.
We get all worked up.